It is 6:30. I'm going to call the Ashland Planning Board meeting to order on February 3, 2021. This is a virtual meeting due to the current COVID-19 pandemic. The governor issued an emergency order 12 that waived the location requirement of public officials at a public meeting. This meeting is being conducted electronically through Zoom, either video or telephone connection. And our Zoom connection is always posted on the town website on the calendar entry for this meeting. Call to call. Roll call. Kathleen DeWolf.
Present.
Paula Hancock.
Present.
And Martine Badger present. And Susan McLeod, our land use assistant, is also present. Minutes.
Okay, I have.
For. And I do. Do you want me to put it up on the screen? I can do that if it. Let me pull it up. And then if we've got questions, find it here. A moment. Minutes. There we go. There we go. Can you see them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. Kathleen, did you have some, something?
Yes. Rebecca. Where is it? Jessiman?
Yes, I did find.
Jessiman.
Yes, I did find the right spelling. It's, the last name is J-E-S-S-E-M-A-N. And I think her first name Rebecca does not have the H at the end.
No, it.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll fix.
Spell that again. J-E-S-S what?
Jessiman.
Yeah, no H at the end of Rebecca.
Yeah, okay, so we'll fix that. Anything else?
Yes, I thought the next scroll down to where it starts, the Scribner Building near the, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to point to my screen like you can see that. I, tell me what you, I thought that was a little awkward. I thought the Scribner Building will be good use of the property for the L.W. Packard business.
Okay.
Instead of repeating property twice. How does that sound?
Will be good use.
The Scribner Bill will be good use of property for the L.W. Packard. Either company or business.
Okay.
Or should we call it LW? I'm confused what we should refer to it as. Minus 33 or LW Packard.
The owner, the, the name of the owner is L.W. Packard. The business that resides in that building, minus 33.
Okay.
Paula, I'm also making notes so we can, so between the two of us, we'll get the corrections.
Okay.
Anything?
Okay, on the second page.
Okay.
After where it's, my name is Stricken out, keeps scrolling up.
Okay.
Kathleen made a motion. Oh, no, it was about the two parties. I'm sorry. Yeah, right? I'm pointing to the screen again. We shouldn't have put we, let's, let's make sure that we say the board.
The board, okay, yes, okay.
Set away.
Yeah.
And then the next paragraph down. Martine advised, blah, 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 blah. Before us tonight, put before the board tonight.
Before the board tonight, right.
Strike the us.
Okay.
That was all.
Okay.
That I noted.
Okay, I think we're all set then. Okay, I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
And a second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Paula Hancock.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
And Martine Badger, aye. Okay, approved. All right. And. The next item on the agenda is the extension of the site plan approval for case number 2017-07. That was for the location of a new tenant called, named Sanctuary ATC in a building owned by JSG Realty LLC. And let me put the original notice of decision up on the screen also. Okay, here's. Close this other one. Okay. Here is the original notice of decision. And I don't, we're either, I know Paula was not on the board then.
No.
Kathleen, you weren't either. Let me just give you a little background.
I was, I was, I was there as.
Secretary.
That's right. Okay, so this is one of the Mill buildings. Actually, as you drive down Winter Street, it's on the left-hand side.
I do know what you're referring to. Are you giving this information?
It's the, it's the long building that sits just up above, a little bit higher than the Mill number three. Sanctuary ATC was given approval on January 4, 2018.
I think I attended that meeting.
Okay, to locate a cultivation and processing medical marijuana facility in an existing part of that building. And this, the original approval also indicated that there would be no additional outdoor lighting, no signage. Traffic would be minimal during regular daytime operating hours. And parking for employees and deliveries would be indoors. The facility would admit no noise, odors, or fumes to impact surrounding residences. So that was the original notice of decision. One year later, in January 2019, would have been the expiration of the one-year site plan approval. It was renewed then to 2020 and then to 2021. And we are now doing an additional one-year renewal. So the letter. Okay. January 21, we've received a letter from Jack McCormick, who has been the attorney representing Sanctuary ATC all along, asking for an additional one-year extension of the site plan approval from January 2021 to January 2022. They still intend to locate their facility in that building. So we need to make a motion and then vote whether to approve the extension or not. Any questions before we do that?
Is there any timeframe, like expiration? How many, how many times can you extend?
I don't think technically there is a limit. Have you ever come across a limit, Susan?
No. I think when you keep it open-ended, though, you periodically should make sure you ask if any other of the conditions have changed for which they were at the time that they were approved. If there's any additional things that you have to now consider. I think we briefly touched on this about, we do have a new police chief. However, I think he went down with the, the former police chief to Rochester to.
Probably at the time.
Facility at the time.
Okay.
We also don't have the same superintendent of the electric company anymore.
Right.
It's just a few change of players that we should just at least update on what the situation is.
Right. And when we make a motion, I'm going to put a couple of conditions that are additional requests to cover those things.
Yeah, maybe, maybe Sanctuary has a new CDO or, or new spokesperson or there might be different players on the other side too.
Yeah. Okay.
And there, there haven't been any changes in the laws either.
No, no.
It's, it's always been a possibility within the three, almost three years that have transpired since then, so.
Has their status changed within, any changes within the state regs?
Not that I, I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
And Mr. McCormick does mention in his very last paragraph that nothing has changed with respect to anything presented to the board on January 3, 2018. Actually, I'll, I'll make a motion because I've got, I've got the conditions kind of written out here. And then we can tweet them if we need to. I'll make a motion to approve the extension of site plan approval for Sanctuary ATC, case number 2017-07, with the following statements added to the notice of decision. That the conditions in the original site plan approval are still valid. That before construction begins, they will, the applicant will provide an update to the fire department, police department, electric, an electric department with any life safety, emergency, and emergency measures and electricity needs before construction begins. And before construction begins, obtain all appropriate local, state, and federal permits.
We need to add water.
Water, okay.
Okay. Any necessary change in square footage due to, due to the business?
We can add, yeah, any other in, inform the planning board when, before construction begins, inform the planning board if any other changes in space or other conditions needed. Something to that effect, which will cover, I think, most anything else. So that's, that's the motion roughly.
I'll second that.
Anything else before we take the vote? Okay, roll call vote. Paula Hancock.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
And Martine Badger, aye. Okay, approved for one-year extension. Okay. Let's, the application form for voluntary merger. Let's look at that right now. And let me pull that up. Thought I had it here. Oh, maybe I don't. Okay. Anyway, do we, does everybody have a copy of it in front of them?
I looked it over this afternoon, so.
Okay.
Familiar.
That I have in front of me is slightly different from the latest one that was emailed. But. Okay, the, on the first page, one suggestion I might make when we're, because we're dealing with a merger. On the line where it says tax map and lots, can we maybe put three lines just so they can list them instead of running them all together in one line? Just to make it a little clearer, maybe just three lines. Separate lines. And that, I think that would be enough. Property zone on my copy here, it didn't show the property zones listed, be able to check off, but it is, I think it is.
That was the old, yeah, that was the older version.
Yes.
I added.
You've added that.
Kick in for which zone it is.
Yes, yes.
Did we include industrial? Under, under zones?
Yes.
Yes.
Industrial slash commercial now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. under section two, this completed application and required fees. Have we inserted three words after that?
Um.
I've got that on my copy, but again, I'm not sure.
A discussion with Patsy said that we, we don't take any fees on the town level.
Okay.
That the applicant simply files directly with the registry of deeds. And because we don't really have to do much in the way of processing, we don't charge any fees for doing it. So I took the fee reference out.
Okay, and then the fee section on the next page also was gone. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, and the RSA is listed there. One question I had, and this is just process. On that last page, on the notice down, it obviously lists the parcels to be merged and there's a notary certification. Does this get notarized after we approve it? Or does this form get notarized when it comes to us for approval?
Think after.
So I'm, what I'm, and where I'm going is on the bottom of that.
Yeah, I, I think I know because your, your signature is supposed to be on it. So should you be present for the notarization of the document?
Or what I was, what, the other direction I was going, do I sign it and then they take it to the notary and have their witnesses? So should those two parts be reversed or not?
No.
Does it get notarized after, it get, does, this form should get notarized after planning board approval?
I would think so.
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah.
What would be the validity of, you know, what would be the value of doing it before?
So I don't know. That's, that doesn't change any of the content of this. I don't, just don't know what the process is.
Yeah, I, I guess part of it is the implication that if, if your signature is below the notary, the notary, it, does that imply what, what the process is as to who does what first? Or did you sign the document at a meeting or whatever? And then the applicant takes it to be notarized to file.
Yeah, so that I don't know. That we can straighten out.
Also, doesn't it, doesn't it raise the question if the notary doesn't know if the application has been approved or not by the planning board? If it does, notarizes it before we approve it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder.
Well, again, it requires, it requires the chair's signature.
Yes.
If push came to shove, you would provide the applicant with the, the minutes from the meeting if they needed that as verification.
Absolutely, I would think, yeah.
But you're not supposed to hold these things up. We don't really have the authority to say yes or no. It's basically, it's put in front of you to sign.
Yes, yes. So we'll, so we'll figure out, Susan, whether hair signature should be, signature should be up further on the form or just leave it where it is. We'll figure that out. I would say let's go ahead and approve the form to get that going. And then if we need to do, rearrange that last page, we can do it. So I don't see any other problems with this. Yeah. Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the form.
Do you want to do it now before the corrections are made?
Yeah, because, those are, those are just, they're minor. Adding a couple of extra lines for the tax map lot numbers is not, that's just formatting. And just figuring out where the planning board signature line should go on that last form.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Paula. Okay, roll call vote. Kathleen.
Aye.
Paula.
Aye.
And Martine, aye. Okay, so that's done. So we can get that because Commerce Properties needs that form, don't they? What would, just a off-the-cuff question. With a property on Winter Street, they're merging basically two pieces, but that back piece really has never had a number. So I'm not sure how they'll describe that.
With A or something or B?
I don't know.
Yeah, well, I guess he could.
Does it get a number? Does it get a number before they merge it or does, do they even bother with the number? I don't know.
Well, now he, he at least has a deed, so the deed would have a book and page.
Absolutely.
That might just be the adequate thing he needs for documentation.
Yeah, okay. All right, so that form's approved. And I would assume very soon we'll see a completed one come through. I want to go through a little bit more of the master plan recommendations, but before we start, are there some other things we need to deal with? Yeah.
Well, yeah, speaking of signing, with the lot line adjustment, the chair and the secretary should form, should sign a Mylar to be, to be filed at the registry.
Do we have a Mylar yet?
No, I'll, I'll have to ask Holden for it.
Okay.
I mean, they did supply enough paper copies because you should also sign a copy for the, the two property owners involved. One for the file, usually Patsy asks for one. And a lot of times the surveyor will want a signed copy back again.
Okay.
For their files.
So we should sign two paper copies. And I know the paper, the big paper copies has a signature block on it.
Yeah.
And then we also will need to sign two Mylars, right?
No, just one, the Mylar goes to the registry.
Okay, just one Mylar?
But the two property owners that each get a paper version.
Okay.
There's usually one that goes into the property file.
So we really need three paper copies to sign.
Yeah, and sometimes, sometimes the surveyor, I know like Tony always asks for a signed copy for his own purposes as well.
I'll bring my.
Send an email to Holden to see.
Get the Mylar, yeah. I'll bring my big paper copy in. And do we have a couple extras at the office?
Yeah, yeah, there. I think they supplied like five.
Okay.
Large sized.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so we'll get those signed. Okay.
I'll have to, I'll have to double check whether he supplied a secret, a separate check for that or not because he came in and gave the application to somebody downstairs. And I think Patsy took the check before I even had a look at the application.
To see what, okay, yeah.
So I'll just see if there's a, a check there and.
Okay. And then we'll get that. Okay, so as soon as we have the Mylar, we can get everything signed. Because I know he was.
Yes, and I, I can make myself available for signatures as well, just let me know.
Okay, yeah. Any other little housekeeping things before we go to master plan? Anything in emails lately?
There was a strange inquiry about 11 West Street, which, looking up, there isn't actually an, an official 11. I think Kathleen figured out that it's probably the, the old liquor store, judging from how.
Which is number 13. No, wait a minute. Which was 13?
Yeah, I think the liquor store was 13, which implies that somehow the state property that's owned by DOT as part of the right-of-way would be number 11 if it even had.
And Irving was 19. And Alex Ray.
Alex Ray, the first one on the block was.
Was six.
The six, yeah.
But it's interesting, I did just a, a non-official Google search. I typed in Google, in Google, I typed in 11 West Street, Ashland.
What'd you get?
And what comes up is a couple of real estate listings for a piece of property that's 88 acres in size.
Wait a minute.
The only, yes, I know, the only thing that that's, that is that large on West Street is Center Street. So I don't know, I'm not, I mean, it's nothing that has come to, it was just an inquiry. How do they find, basically, the person wanted to find out how to verify all the butters. And Susan, you suggested she contact Patsy for some of that.
She's going to get actual mailing addresses, number one.
Is through Patsy.
Yeah.
So, yeah. If I see Patsy, I may ask her if anyone has called her about that or contacted her about that.
Yeah, I gave both the phone number and Patsy's email address to, as contact information.
But it was interesting, when I just typed in 11 West Street, Ashland, New Hampshire, it comes up with a 88-acre-sized property.
Yeah, well, even when it went up for auction or something years ago, they said it was 88 to 89 acres. And what we just witnessed with the, it was, it was 85.
Right, yeah. So I, it just seemed that was in that ballpark, so I was just wondering.
Plus or minus?
Yeah. Kind of a larger.
Unless the old liquor store is actually two lots.
I don't think so.
You know, the area.
Yeah. Anyway, well, that was just an interesting piece that I saw. And I think I mentioned in the email that I did sign up for a webinar on the excavation RSA just to see if there's anything, I think it's going to be a series of three. Am I thinking, I've got several webinars coming up. Yeah, it's just, it's just one on RSA 155B, the excavation RSA. I thought I'd attend it just to see if there's any little tidbit that we missed.
No, 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 we aren't going to go revisit that.
No. But I just. Yeah, just to see if there's anything we may have, that may give us some hints on dealing with anything with it. I am beginning to work on the application form. The part I've been working on for the application form is a checklist of all the requirements.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, and I'm going right back to our.
Original one.
Our newly approved regulations and building the checklist on that. The rest of the form is going to be minor. That's, but I'm beginning to work on that. So maybe by next meeting, I should have a draft for us to look at. Okay. Any other little things, Susan, that's come up recently? That we need to talk about or deal with?
No, I guess, I, there was, there was one inquiry about town job descriptions that I guess was mainly directed to me after a conversation with the building inspector.
Yes.
But I did do a brief write-up of job descriptions, which I think maybe the town should have something like that. Anytime anybody's interested. Anytime anybody's interested in any of the positions to not, not everybody will even know or be so inclined to go to the website and start reading RSA's, so just kind of giving the job description of what's involved might be helpful to some of these people.
And I know on the website, there is the section for volunteer opportunities. And several of our boards, I think, are listed as they've always needed members. And maybe I could incorporate some of that into that.
Yeah.
Some of that, that job, just that kind of, the, what role-
Of, of view, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
What their, what their role is, I can incorporate a little bit of that in there. And the, one other email that's going to start coming in periodically is from NHMA. NHMA, it's going to be a legislative bulletin. And it comes out periodically, trying to think, is it weekly? It may be almost, it may-
I would say monthly, but I could be, you know.
I, they're just, they're just getting in gear.
Yeah, they've published, they published the schedule of hearings, I think, all the way up until the beginning of March. Then they do the updates as to what status they are, whether they've made it to the House, or whether they've gone to committee or whatever else.
But it's interesting, if you have a chance, or, or if you're interested. The NHMA legislative bulletin. Just interesting to skim to see what bills are being proposed in the House and the Senate. And there are, it's a few coming up dealing with land use again. So
I used to be able to get those directly to my email, which is nice now, trying to look at them with with the town email site, you have to keep things back and forth.
Oh, okay.
Because it won't, with, between Round Cube, it doesn't, the full screen doesn't open up.
Oh, okay. Now, in my version of Round Cube, when I first open up that email, it's just text.
Yeah.
Yeah, you click on being able to-
And then there's an option at the top that says, "Display Images." It, it views better that way, if you ask, ask it to display images.
Okay, instead of just trying to read the text.
Yeah.
No, it's when they change, you know, I used to get it, I used to get all that directly to my email and, you know, I could read it at my
Yes.
leisure.
They have to resubscribe with their new version.
Um, yes, and I, so what I did, but obviously whatever I missed doing something.
Okay, there's also another one-
I think it was the timeframe too.
Okay, yeah.
Such and such time.
That could be. There's also another newsletter that comes in, NHDES Municipal Echo Link.
I do get that one.
That one, that one comes in, I think that's a monthly one.
Yes.
That's-
And I still get it from the New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commissions, they also put legislative updates in their newsletter.
Okay, yeah.
The municipal association also has their news link, which is more related to what workshops and webinars and things like that are. And then it's the legislative update, I think, comes out a little less frequently as they, as they follow what's currently in the House or the Senate.
Yeah.
Or it's still stopping committee.
Okay. So let's look at, the last chapter we did was natural resources. Next chapter up is recreation. And that it's got quite a few, no, not too many, about 10 recommendations. That chapter, the recreation chapter, was updated in April 2012. Each of these chapters, the entire master plan was not approved, reviewed, or approved all at one time, it was done chapter by chapter. That's why you see different dates on different chapters. Does everybody have a copy? To look at?
Yes.
Okay. Recreation, the first one, provide shade, especially in the playground area around the booster facility. Research options to either install awning over playground or strategically plant shade trees. I don't think there's been any change in the shade.
No, they had the opportunity with that expensive new playground, and that wasn't something that was ever even talked about, planned, designed, or done, so.
Right, yeah. But we can, we can make a note that their new playground was put in place, but there was no shade added to it at the time. So I don't know of any other update on that. Second one, improve the bandstand area or find a more viable location better suited to use for concerts, events, rentals, et cetera. One thing to note, just in discussion, the bandstand itself sits in that roadway that, from the, the driveway into the ball field, and it ends up that roadway or driveway at the ice skating rink right now. That also is part of a right-of-way that goes through the ball field and down over the hill behind into a large piece of property in behind that area. So that's always been an issue if in, if at any point somebody does buy and develop that large piece of land behind the ball field, that right-of-way could become an issue. So that so any major, we can't do any major construction on that, along that driveway area because of the right-of-way there. So every so often, there have been discussions about where should the bandstand be? And I don't think there's ever been any real recent effort to look at any other location. There's been no, I don't think there's been any recent discussion about that.
Wasn't there a group trying to put it on where Dollar General was now?
Yep, that was, that was the last effort. I think it almost even made it to warrant status, but
Expensive.
And they, they mentioned Memorial Park occasionally, it's too big for Memorial Park, there isn't this, there isn't a level ground to put it in.
No, no, there isn't, no.
I'm happy to share what the condition is. I think it might have been repainted a couple I don't- It is painted a couple of years ago.
I don't know whether any repairs, that ought to be something we'll, we'll ask somebody, whether any repairs or painting has been done on it or is needed.
So again, this is-
Know the age of it?
Town owns?
Pardon me? I missed what you said, Susan.
So I am assuming this is yet again, something the town owns that doesn't know what to do with it.
Yeah, the bandstand is owned by the town, yeah. So no real updates on that, just a little background on it. Third one, build storage shed at the beach and follow through with coordinating programs with New Hampshire Fish and Game Department.
I think they did put up a new storage shed if last year, the year before, that at the beach, because the other one was falling apart.
Yeah.
But I can't tell you the exact date.
Some of these, we can email Ann Barney to get a little more detail to fill in. And I'm not sure, the second half of that recommendation, build storage shed at the beach is very clear, concrete. What, what was the, what is being referenced by the second half, follow through with coordinating programs with New Hampshire Fish and Game Department?
I have no idea. No idea.
It's a strange combination of a building and programs in that one, and I'm not sure what-
I think originally there was some programs at the time that this was discussed, that there was a possibility of storing kayaks or canoes or something of the sort, when Fish and Game used to actually do programs related to that.
Okay. Hmm, okay. That may be something I should, will have, there may be reference in the text of the chapter, we'll have to see, have to go back and look at that. Number four, upgrade or replace the booster building to better accommodate the needs of the community. The changing demographic in town is fewer younger children and a growing teen population who lack a safe hangout space and a growing senior population. We should have and to update this, I think one thing we should do is is contact Ann and have her list all the improvements that have been done in the Booster Club over the, since 2012. She could give us a list.
I agree.
Yeah. So I don't Yeah, so I think the main thing is, we can, we can get a list from Ann, what improvements have been made to the Booster Club building. I think each of us knows of some of the improvements that are made. I'm not sure, we could, probably between us, we could list them all, but we can just get a list from her. See, I, the reference to the demographic changing from younger children to growing teen population. Again, that's programming.
Programming, yeah. I don't think our place to comment on programming.
Well, if you broadly define recreation though, and we have a park and rec department within the, the town government, it's something that, again, in the discussions was, there's, there's the after-school program and a lot of ones for younger children, and even the whole playground effort was all for younger children.
Yes.
And there has been a lack of any kind of consistent addressing any older population for any kind of programming whatsoever. I think at some point, maybe the library and their book club, which is a different sort of, not really recreating.
And they do have the teen program.
Yeah, yeah.
Teen programs. The library has filled until COVID that niche for the tweens and the, the younger teens, probably ages
Yeah.
12 through maybe 14 or 15. The, you know, middle school maybe six, six through eight grade population.
Yeah, and even the the periodic nights out that they would have at, through Park and Rec were generally geared towards the younger children.
Yeah.
Younger children.
The lower elementary grade.
Right, yeah, yeah. So it is the need for programming for teens, and it also mentioned the growing senior population, I think is a need that-
Oh, I agree, but you know how sensitive people are if you believe you're overstepping. But Susan-
But I, I think it's a, I think it's a good topic for discussion.
It is, because really there's very little for seniors to participate in.
Yeah, this, this isn't a matter of planning board authority to do something.
Really, no.
It's a plan that, that the, all the residents of the town are supposed to reflect what they want their town to be and what to provide for them, and, and so if, if a greater outreach to all, all residents.
demographic, yeah.
Right.
I mean, there is the basketball court and the tennis courts, but that even became contentious this year. Who would use them in?
Unique, a unique year. So yes, it is, it's a topic of discussion that should involve the town, townspeople, yeah. Okay, five. Revitalize the Parks and Recreation Board, which has not met since 2008. This board serves a different function than the recently formed Ashland Area Recreation Association. I don't know on that.
I only know, know what was shared with me, I did not know that committee existed or board. I'm only familiar with AARA.
Yeah, and that is a, a private 501(c)(3) organization, yeah, yeah.
So the update note was interesting.
Yes, yes. So that, that-
I never heard it mentioned, so.
No, I've heard no mention of it other than that, that note there, yeah.
Which notices?
The-
Town manager opposes this in 2020.
About the Park and Recreation Board.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe we shouldn't talk about this right now, but-
No. And things, and things may change.
Commission, a park and recreation commission has to be established by a, a vote of the legislature. In the past of this town, actually did happen. Whether or not it was ever rescinded is another story altogether. And the difference between voluntary boards as opposed to commissions that are statutorily defined and have their own means of having funds as well.
Right.
Yeah, two, two different things, yeah.
Two different things, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Uh, number six, further, further research may be needed to better understand the permitted recreational uses for conservation lands in Ashland. This would require discussion with organizations that hold the easements for the conserved parcels. If this work is to be conducted, it is recommended that the resultant information be provided to New Ha, to New Hampshire Granite to add in future conservation land and recreational lands mapping efforts.
Uh, well, with Witten Woods, Squam Lake Association was partnering with that, a mountain biker group, which I don't remember their proper name. And Squam Lake Association had stewardship, I believe, of the trails. I don't know if anything ever came of that. And I believe the point person in Plymouth who was either representing the mountain bikers that had some in, interest, passed away suddenly last year or the year before, so I don't know if anything ever came with that. But it was, it was a topic of discussion. Susan might remember that, that part with Witten Woods, that they were going to provide mountain trail biking.
I think recently I saw an article making reference to a mountain biking group doing some clearing or groundwork in that area. But I don't remember where I saw it. So there may be things happening that we don't, that we're not aware of.
We're not aware of.
As far as, as far as Witten Woods goes.
But I believe it's the Squam Lake Association that, that took on the stewardship of the trails.
Right, right. I mean, this is, we've got a lot of recreation land, recreation potential in this town. And I think what things are happening are happening not through a concerted town effort to look at it. I think individual organizations have been doing some, but again, I think it's something that would be valuable to be able to promote as one advantage in Ashland.
Yeah, I think some of that statement was also that they're, they're listed in Granite, Granite can be difficult to work with.
Yes.
Not necessarily updated.
Yeah.
But the other thing is with, within the, the easements that already exist in town, you have to kind of research what is in the easement itself as to what it allows. I mean, some
Right.
It's up to the land, there's a whole menu, whether allow, they allow other than hiking, whether they allow horses, or camping, or- or camping or hunting or snowmobiles or whatever else. So.
That, that.
Whether it's. Whether it's Pettit or Glidden or. SLCS or some of the other ones that, even the, even the Fish and Game property and Scribner Forest.
Right.
It would be nice to have exactly what each allows in the way of the menu of what, the, the use of the land and their trails.
Yeah, definitely. I think it's a, I think it's a recommendation that. We haven't really talked about any of these recommendations as to whether they should go forward. But I, but on this one, I think it is one, this is a recommendation that would be very valuable to go forward because it is an aspect of Ashland that could be promoted very well.
Yeah, because again, unfortunately, we don't have a conservation commission. Certainly, Chapter Four was supposed to be their baby and they were supposed to really flesh it out and, and base it on what a conservation commission is supposed to be doing. Chapter Five has elements in it of, again, the recreational use of the environment and environmental education tied to that would all be something that a conservation commission could certainly take the lead on.
Well, at one point, they, they were beginning, there was at least the start of talks with the school linking the school trails to Witten Woods, but it did have to cross another private conservation easement. I don't know what happened to that. It, it kind of suddenly, it was, there seemed to be a lot of interest. And then it kind of, I don't know if it's because summer came and everybody left school, and that's the other thing. If you tried to partner with school, you don't get things done by June, then they just sit until the next September. I don't know if they ran into a glitch. But I didn't attend any of the talks. I, I want to say it was re-sharped, but I'm not sure. But you know, it, it was an idea and there seemed to be some enthusiasm for it.
Well, for that matter, out of the Economic Development Committee, at one point, Levi Bradley had actually kind of mapped out walking, hiking or biking routes within the town.
Yes.
To be able to, that, that would have involved, again, follow up with any private property owners for the, the getting permission to, to do certain things like that. I mean, especially if you're going to publicize them, that it's open to the public. There's a, there's a lot of work to be done in the way of getting permissions and.
Yes.
Before you even make maps and invite people. So that didn't, that also didn't really get off the ground either. But it always takes at least one person with the passion to really follow through to get any of these.
They've got to encourage the private landowners to, to join in, to be, you know, supportive, to be enthusiastic and some just aren't.
Yeah. I think what a lot of these recommendations are showing, just kind of a general comment, is there was a lot of validity, validity in these recommendations. There is, it's also illustrating the need that we really do need a conservation commission to be reactivated. It's a shame, it's a shame that we don't have one right now.
It always lummits me that, that we live in the area where we live, that we just could not get people willing to engage in this.
Yeah. Okay, number seven, town website, website should have a recreational opportunities page with a map or references to recreation beyond municipal programs. I'm going to make one comment as the webmaster of the website. One, the website for the town has gone through several variations, iterations and so on. And for a while, or, one of the early iterations had a list of businesses, whether restaurants or quite a variety of businesses.
That came in with.
It's tough to, it's, it's tough to keep that up to date. And there's also the issue of, is it a municipal website or is it a community?
Bulletin board.
Chamber slash tourist website.
Yeah.
So it's, and there, the, they can be two different things. Some, I have seen a few towns that have some of the local businesses, recreation, private links on them. But most town, most municipal websites don't. There is, I think there is a need for that. There is a place for that, but it may not be on the municipal website. At the same time, and I have not looked at them for a while, but also chamber of commerce type websites in the area have gone through a lot of changes over the years. And there often has not been a lot of references to things in Ashland. Why? I don't know. Whether it's a matter of person in charge of those groups communicating with what's in Ashland or Ashland communicating with them, I don't know.
Well, you have to pay.
It's been that gap.
You have to pay membership dues to be in a co, chamber of commerce.
Yes.
Again, with the Economic Development Committee, we had invited the, the director.
Right.
And he said he'd gone around and told a lot of people who just didn't think they got their money's worth from being on a website or being involved in a chamber of commerce.
Yeah.
I mean, the other thing too is.
But if you don't join, you're not going to get any benefit anyway.
Right.
So I don't, it's, it's a tough one.
Yeah, the other thing is some of our nonprofits, some of the town websites at least do have, if they don't have a heritage commission, they do have references to their his, their local historical society.
Right, right.
That has to do with the history of the town. So that is not necessarily directly municipal, but it also is something to do with the town itself.
Yes.
So.
So there is, there is a need for that. Finding the right place and the right way to do it still has to be figured, has to be figured out. I think we, but we do need.
There's, there's the Out and About Ashland that was started, again, by Cheryl Cox when she was with the her, the Economic Development.
Right.
And she, she does try to keep it events and things that are happening and apolitical and.
Yes, she does.
Even, you know, posting jobs, job openings in Ashland and everything else. So I think that covers some of the, those aspects. It's on Facebook.
Right.
So.
I've noticed even with that, that she has now widened her area of activities she's recording. So you know, there's just a limit of what people are doing at a certain time to keep that.
You know, I think she, she kind of vets what she thinks might be interesting so that.
Yes.
More the people of Ashland to do other things other than sit at home in Ashland.
Right, right, yeah.
Well, that's at the top of my feed. I clicked something way back when it started. So whenever I put on, you know, log into Facebook, that's the thing that comes up on my page.
Yeah. Number eight, work with state and other organizations to, to develop biking and walking routes and hiking trails.
Well, we have the Witten, you know, Witten Woods. We've kind of already touched on that.
I know the Heal Group, when it was active, talked about biking and walking routes. I know they looked at bike, biking through town is a tough one. The roads.
Yeah.
Are not wide enough. They are not wide enough. There is no, there are a lot of.
Bike lanes, no room for bike lanes.
No, there's no, particularly, for instance, along from Memorial Park going towards Holderness, that first part that's still within town, there is absolutely no room on either side of the road to add a bike lane. It's.
Yeah, again.
I know they talked, they talked about it. They looked into some of that.
Yeah, same thing with Winona Road. There's, you know, you have women with baby carriages and dogs walking in the middle of the road. I mean, at one time, yeah, it was again discussed to have some kind of either easement or agreement or something to have an alternate bike route that would cut into like that property behind the Booster Club and then come out somewhere where you could pick up Thompson Street as an alternative, a parallel route without having to go onto three and 25.
Yeah, yeah.
Because this town doesn't really have a parallel alternate route if you.
No, it doesn't. Now, going towards Holderness, once you get beyond the junction of Route Three with River Street.
By Jerry Joy.
Yes, by Jerry Joy. Then the road widens. You've got very wide shoulders up, up to the point of getting into Holderness. But I know that's been a tough issue for the people that have looked at it, but it's still. It's still, still something I think that people look for. Would be, would be very valuable if we could do that. Number nine, explore the trust for public lands conservation economics or similar programs to quantify the economic value of conservation and recreational lands in Ashland. I don't know much about that.
I, I don't know what that group is, but well, we did hazard mitigation and we were asked for the conservation land. There is, we have a, this town has a very high percentage of land in conservation.
It does.
As opposed to other, other towns.
Well, that goes back to the, the studies that a lot of organizations do like S, SLCS. And I think even Dave Jeffers from LRPC has talked about this as well. Is that when it, everybody thinks that every piece of land that you can put a house on is going to bring in the money that the town needs. And the reality is the, the, the value of open land are land that is not necessarily used for development has its inherent value.
Yes.
And that, that the recreational things, like again, with the, that original discussions with Witten Woods when the mountain biker said, well, if we, if we started including trails here, then people come into town to eat their lunch and maybe stay overnight and shop or whatever else. So that the, the impact for allowing those types of activities can be as valuable or more valuable than a house that brings more people and more demand for town services.
Yes.
And I think you can remember when we would, on the Witten Woods Committee, that it was a very hard sell to many people here in town. Most of the support frankly came from Holderness, not from Ashland. And, you know, I couldn't explain it. It's just.
But there is, there is that, and there is that economic value to those lands, as Susan stated. It's also, it's, it's also, I think, an attraction for people who are looking for this type of area. It does attract a certain group of people. It's, it's part of, it's, it's part of a way of, part of a way of life also that people are looking for too.
One of the reasons why we chose to live here, because of the environment, the natural environment.
Yes. There was something, okay, I'm looking for something in one of our past minutes. Okay, at the end, our November fourth minutes of the planning board. At the end of the minutes, I put links to some of the presentations that LRPC has done recently. And there were two presentations dealing with nature economy, the values of freshwater recreation in New Hampshire and rivers and economic development, which ties right in with this particular recommendation. There is that, that is, nature economy were two links. And those, those were links I put at the end of the November fourth minutes.
My experience has been, if you own that little piece of paradise, you usually do not want to share any of it with the general public. And, and that makes it different. This is, this is our little piece of heaven here. And they are, a lot of people, that's all they, they're concerned about is, is their posso and don't get too close to shore and all that type of thing, though there's some people who, who abuse it, but it's, it's. My experience has been, you know, living on a lake and near a lake, that it's. It, it has a tendency to become very closed off to the general public. And that's why, you know, we had trouble on the Conservation Commission trying to recruit people who lived on the natural resources and to, you know, become more interested in preserving the ecology and whatnot. It was like, you know, I'm, no, I'm, I've got, I'm happy where I am and what I have. Yeah, it, it was disappointing because we did approach quite a few people and I do know a couple who took it upon themselves to send out questionnaires of what people were, what was important to them on the river and they, they didn't receive any responses. So that was quite an eye opener.
Interesting, yeah. Okay, number 10, encourage exploring additional land suitable for protection or recreational use.
Well, again.
One question, has, has Ashland reached, reached its limits for conserved land? A question some people would ask.
Yeah.
Some people would say most definitely.
Well, again, Wit, Witten Woods and some of the contiguous parcels have come about since that chapter was.
Yes, they have.
So, so yeah, so the question would be. Has, yeah, again, has Ashland reached the limit that it can support, that kind, you know, that tax base of this type of land protection?
Yeah.
I mean, it came into play because it's part of the squam watershed, which is what SLCS was interested in protecting.
Squam Highlands, I think is the term.
Okay, what time is it? Seven thirty-eight?
Got time to do community facilities?
Community facilities has six.
Oh, J.
Look at that.
CIP.
That's, this is going to be an interesting one.
Yeah.
Community facilities, the very first one references the capital improvement plan.
There is one.
There is one. I don't, there, there is no longer a CIP committee.
Because I'm a town manager, it's part of his job description that he continues what a, what a committee has set up, that you take off this year and you add the next year in your 10-year plan.
Right. We have not seen any concrete recent plan, CIP plan. And I think that may be something that gets addressed when there's a new town manager.
Well, now adding the utilities, that really adds to the.
They were included as best we could at the time.
Yes. Yeah. I'm just making a few notes here. Um, I'm just making a few notes here. But a. Capital Improvement Plan is needed. And one that can be referenced. It's, it's part of, it should be a part of the budget process too, part of the budget development process.
I agree with you.
One of the big documents that should be referred to during budget development.
Of course, because it's the major, in the end, it's the major chunk of where a lot of the municipal portion of the budget goes.
That's right, that's right, the large.
The idea of it too is to spread out voting in. Select amounts for capital improvement fund, it reserves.
Yes.
So that the tax rate stays steady instead of. Going down when you don't need something and spiking when you need something expensive.
Right.
It plays well into economic development, if some businesses is looking, they want to see if a town has a CIP. So that the tax rate is fairly predictable.
Um, I will say, when the. Capital Improvement Plan Committee was active, one of the. Most effective. Things that came out of that was establishing capital reserve funds.
Yes.
For large expenditure items. To be able to spread costs out, spread large purchases. Out over a period of time, that, and I. That I think is one of the most important things that did come out of that committee. And so far it is continuing, it has, and it does. It levels out that budgeting. Process, otherwise.
Yeah, the voters seem to be supportive of it.
They have supported it, yes.
Some of the budget committee still doesn't. Think that it's. Valuable, I guess is the best I could. Label it.
Yeah. But that does need to be updated, the capital improvement plan. As far. Yep, I'll leave it at that. Uh, number two also references the capital improvement plan. Again, pretty much the same thing we were talking about for number one.
It also impacts. Well. A town can have impact fees to help with its highway structure. When there's large new developments unless you have a.
Yes. Right. Uh, number three, form a space needs committee. To identify and begin to prioritize the Ashland's capital needs. Let's see, we have had, there was some, we've got some notes here. The LCHIP grant for the town hall.
Actually did draw up a list of all the town-owned properties and attempted to get a conversation going about the use of each and every one of them.
And as you know, there was some pushback. But. That being said, now the library is. Starting in a new direction, the new focus. That would, that's. One area that hopefully will be positive going forward.
Once, when the light, when we started looking at. Space for the library. We, we looked at. Several buildings and or locations. And. As we were doing that, we created a. Kind of a spreadsheet for each property that we looked at, looking at advantages and disadvantages of either that property or that building. And we did the same thing for the building that we are in currently. What it, what it really showed when we looked at our own building is. There had really been. No evaluation of that. Building. For what its best purpose would be, or how to best use it. There had been. Very limited inspections of the property for a long time. And I have a feeling that is indicative of. Many of the other town buildings too.
Yes.
And part of that, the space needs committee, yes, as we, as we change uses in town buildings. We need to look at what is for each building and for the buildings, all the buildings together. What is the best use of the space that we do have in our town buildings? How do we best use the space? How do we best? Look at future needs for those, for those buildings. So it, it is an area that I think we found just within, look, by looking at the library building. We found that there is a. Lack of information and, and oversight. And. A lack of really analyzing what. The town has in all of its buildings.
And going with that is. Certain. People had become very territorial. About the buildings they occupy. And did not want to have dialogue. Outside of a certain group of people. Um, which shows, you know, most, most of our town-owned buildings have been, it's a Band-Aid approach. You don't do anything until it's broken, it needs to be repaired. So reactive instead of proactive. It, it's, well, it's been a hard role, hard role to hold. Getting people to. Engage in dialogue unless. They were forced or insurance said you must, you must do this and you must do it now. But each building is, it, you know, it's kind of a hodgepodge. Other than the LCHIP study for the town office. None of the other buildings really have any sort of assessment. On them. I know the, the, the visual assessment of the library. Had a lot of shortcomings, but at least it was a visual assessment that opened a few people's eyes to. Areas of that building that the normal person doesn't see.
Well, again, this, to some extent, it does take somebody in a leadership role to really push it forward.
Yes.
And a perfect example of what happened in the past was. The electric building, that, that newer one that went up that was controversial and was way over. It cost way over what it should have and could have been. But that he should have started with, there were three separate departments sharing that building. And instead of all getting together and looking at how they could maximize that space and do something with it. Um, it was, none of them wanted to talk to each other and this is what one department wanted to do.
And hence, that's why we have a town manager now, was that some of the, that some of the, that's the. One of the. Direct outcomes of that.
Right.
To eliminate some of that territorial mindset. That was not productive to the, for the town and as a whole.
So I, I believe there's still a spreadsheet that was done. Three, four years ago by the Heritage Commission. And location and property map and whatever of, of every one of those. Even, yeah, even some of the parking that was attached to them.
Yeah.
If they still have that.
That would be, that would be a good thing to look at, be interested to look at.
That was, and that was not going inside, that was more of a.
Right.
Visual assessment that was not done inside.
That's the, that's the first step that's needed.
Yeah.
Is that, yeah. Uh, number four. Improve the energy efficiency of Ashland's community facilities.
You know, there's now a statutory board for an energy board that a town can. Vote into being. I think it's fairly new in the last couple of years, I think Bristol, I think Bristol has one.
Sandwich has one. They're doing broadband as well.
Susan, you're going to end up wow, out, you know, outwowing us. You have everything at your fingertips.
Again, this is another one that takes. That needs to look at all of the community, all of the town buildings.
Right, I mean, even there's been small steps of changing lighting and.
Right.
Doing energy audits to, again, the pushback from the LCHIP was, well, we've already done a, you know, study of town hall. And it was only an energy audit.
Energy.
Prove that.
Yes.
The windows leaked and that. That you used a lot more electricity on the lights that were there and.
Yeah, yeah. So again, small things have been done in individual buildings. But a lot more could be done, yeah. Uh, number five, let's see.
When, when did the USDA rural loans come out, do you remember Susan, is it, is it. By calendar, do they roll out around the same time?
Yeah.
I believe you. Shared that link with me last year. That's something the library could consider.
Yeah, because I, they, again, they usually have some kind of workshop that, that helps you. Guides you through getting the grants together and what it involves.
There, there are a lot of USDA Rural Development Authority. Has grants and you can get grants or loans or you can combine the two. And there is a. One of the large categories has to do with community facilities. And we have the library several years ago, looked at it a couple of times. For something small, we were going to do something small in the library building itself. But. Part of, we could not. And I don't remember what it was for at that time. But we could not do it because. It did not involve bringing the restroom up to handicap ADA compliance, that had to be a piece of it. Uh, but we also have looked at it when we were proposing buying the, the historic school for the library. Uh, one part of that would have been a US, uh, our rural development grant. For the furnishing and fixtures inside. So we have done those applications before, obviously going forward, that probably will be an element of anything that we do in the library.
It should be easy to move now too.
Yes. Those grants are tied in. The amount that you're eligible for. Is tied in with the. I believe the median income of the community. And we are in a very, very favorable. Uh, category because of our lower median income, yes. Uh, we get a much better, we get much better funding or, or better loan rates also. But that's available for. Not just a lot, not just the library would be able to use it, there are other facilities and. Community, uh, town facilities that could use part of that. That apply for that.
Like somebody has to be the nagger.
And, and sometimes it takes finding that one. One person finding that one idea. To develop a grant around. That we haven't, we haven't done that. Yeah.
We know how you like to do grants.
Oh.
Writing.
I think Susan has done a lot too, hasn't she?
Let's give you another job.
And, okay, number five has to do with. Energy efficiency. And again. Again, understanding what your energy uses are currently and. Making plans to improve the energy efficiency of buildings and so on.
I found out that the streetlights, only some of them had been switched out to LED lights. It was, somebody started, did a few. Complete the job. So, you know, things need to be started and completed.
And again, on, on a larger scale, because I think it's coming up again in the legislature. One of the bills that had been vetoed would, would have allowed municipalities to start. Producing their own electric by net metering. And a lot of towns, you know, use their landfills as, as a. The perfect place to set up a, a solar.
A solar array, yes.
And we were told that the landfill was not suitable, even though visually it looked fantastic. It's because it was landfill and there's heavy metals and other toxic. Stuff in the soil and some solar installators are very hesitant to, uh, dig into that soil. But the well area, the wellhead area looked mighty promising.
Flat open field.
Yeah.
And number six, require fire and safety compliance for all municipal facilities. Again, that all has to start with detailed evaluation. Of, of the buildings for fire and safety.
You know, now that we have a, a building inspector and co-reformment officer, maybe once he settles. More into the job and gets hopefully a little more caught up. Maybe he could start doing a visual or checklist assessment of the town building.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fire and safety is fire department.
Yes, yes.
But building inspectors certainly could look at the infrastructure of the, although again, town, town hall did get an engineering. Inspection for the LCHIP.
Yes, yes. So there are ways to. Do the evaluations of facilities, whether for space needs or for energy efficiency. Or for fire and, and life safety, there are ways to get. Funding to do a full-scale evaluation for some, for those things.
Well, it took.
It.
It took two turns at the polls before we got the LCHIP for the town.
It's not, it's not easy, it's not necessarily fast, but it can be done.
Well, you got to find, you got to find the right narrative that people then understand because.
Oh, yes.
The O.C.A. passed because we videotaped what the, the rabbit more known as the police department.
Yes.
And the actual condition of the building itself.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Had a visual.
Okay, I think we're going to stop there.
Oh. It's not very, I don't feel very uplifted or. So. Man, in some way, oh, I hate to sound negative, how many things still?
Okay.
Have not moved very far forward.
Now, I guess, the, the one other thing with town facilities besides becoming totally aware of the ones that. Are, exist in the present day. Tied into that, and it might be in another chapter, is this, the, the ongoing. Thing that keeps on coming up and that's regionalization, whether or not a fire department, a police department. Again, marries up with Holderness or some abutting communities to have a different arrangement at some point.
This is expensive. Very expensive.
Everything's expensive.
Yeah.
But yes, that is. Reach, yes, and a lot of towns, there are a lot of examples in the state where towns have done that. We've, we're in an area where we've got. We've, we're in an area where we've got several small towns right next to each other and it would be Well, that's, yeah, that's an attitude that has to be overcome.
Again, everybody who thinks things happen overnight don't realize that some things that happen overnight have taken decade to get to.
Yes, yes.
You can't just drop the conversation because it doesn't go anyplace the first time, you know. Ideas are a million of them out there and not very many of them are actually new. It's that they recirculate, they recirculate until they stick when the time is right, the people are right and you know, the conditions are right, so you can't just give up, you shouldn't give up on what you think might need to be, you know, redressed over and over again.
Yes.
Says that only three people on the planning board. That we can't even get somebody interested in joining.
Well, and we, and we, we have to keep trying and we will keep trying. Yeah. Okay, I don't have anything else. Anything.
You know what, my dean, I think, you know, I'm glad we kept this as an ongoing because it, it was, you know, it was daunting at for us. It was like the excavation.
But it's still, we still need to get to.
But we have been, you know, we plugged away, we're up to chapter seven, out of how many?
Nine.
Nine?
Yeah. Yeah. But we still need to, the.
And let me tell you, number nine, historic and cultural resources, Susan and I participated in updating through the Heritage Commission that chapter. What, two years ago, almost three now, we did it right off.
Do we have a copy of that update?
It was.
It was forwarded, I, I certainly still have it on my computer as it was kind of put on hold because it has to go through a public hearing, so we originally thought that if the planning board can lump any number of different chapters together, it would be fewer planning, fewer public hearings to have to schedule.
Yeah. Because that's the next, the big thing we really need to tackle, I know it's useful going through the old recommendations and the discussion and what's happened since then. But the big piece that we still need to do is decide on what we want to do for any survey, what chap, in what chapter or chapters we need to concentrate on, what the priorities are. And we really need, we need to get into that.
Yeah, I know we forwarded that forever. But the most, the biggest update, when master plan first came out, there was no Heritage Commission.
Right.
So, well, and now it's kind of dormant. That, that was one of the biggest takes on that.
Okay, next meeting is February 24th. Agenda items, anybody have agenda items for that?
No, we have nothing on the, nothing, no, um, applications.
Not that we've had. Not yet.
Uh, what about, what about Levi Bradley? Have you, is that on that agenda?
No, he's never submitted anything.
Oh, okay, no.
I, I just, yeah, and Alright, 24th was the date we gave him.
Right, yeah. No, I we've heard nothing from him and I have a feeling that may become
A moot point.
A dead issue.
May well.
Yeah. The hides who were looking, doing some plans.
Oh, yeah.
For that group of cabins at the end of the covered bridge, we haven't heard back from them lately.
No, I mean, I could, I could reach out and just say, how are things going and
Yeah.
You have any idea of when you might be able to have the, the materials that you wanted to present?
Yeah.
Just give them a little.
Still let them know that we're still available for them to, come see us, yeah.
Any, any updates on the Dairy Joy and the
Tracy girl?
And the ice cream place down.
Are they still living in that trailer? I hope not, I mean, mobile home, camper, whatever RV.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I haven't been, I haven't had.
That, that's, that's not a planning board issue, you know, it's again, that would go to enforcement or some other avenue. She came to us when she became the owner as opposed to being the tenant and if he wants to expand her business when she opens in May or whenever that is, then we talked to her.
Yeah.
The only thing I've heard from her and that was back in the fall, was coming in to ask about how tiny a tiny house could be, so.
Oh, okay.
So she's dealing with the building inspector on that.
Okay, okay.
And the other ice cream place has not come back about there, patio. So I guess it was demoed by now, what.
The back end of the building?
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I assume.
Her last thing was again, asking again about fences. Again, forwarded her all the, all the information we had spoken about before.
Yeah. And it's always tricky when we talk fences with her because there are two, two places. There's the fence issue around in the area behind the building.
And the, and the.
And, and there's that fence that joins that is between her building and the next building. So we've always got to be careful to clarify when she says fence, which one is she talking about?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so.
Paul, you find anything else that's been languishing?
Those, those two just happened to pop up that we had talked to them quite a while ago and
Yeah.
I just haven't heard any, heard any update.
Yeah.
Well, everything should be channeled through Susan now.
And they're, they're both closed, so unless
Right.
If something, when they open again, if there's anything different from what they had discussed with us previously, then that would be a
Then we'll, yeah.
That would be a revisit for some.
As we get closer to spring, we'll kind of keep our ears and eyes open, yeah.
Any update on Farnham?
It's out of our hands.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's out of our hands now.
Yeah.
There are, there are, there, there are plans to do some inspections, but again, they have to involve the property owners, so that's from the inspection part of it.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that was prompted by the fact that we sent him a denial and if he's responded to that back to us.
Well, no, no, it's all now in the hands of code enforcement.
Okay.
And inspection, yeah. Yeah. Any parts of our regulations or forms we need to go over?
Well, I guess the subdivision regs haven't been looked at in a while.
Yeah.
Some of the wording in there.
Probably, probably outdated, I think it's been quite a while. Yeah.
I hope it's not like 20 or 30 years.
No, I, no, it's not that bad.
No, it's not that long and it's also looking at the, the, even just the formatting, I mean, I'd like it some documents to look uniform and easier to update than
Yeah.
The ways they had been formatted in the past, like couldn't figure out how to do running feet or running heads, so they're in the middle of the text.
Text, yeah. The last, it was, the subdivision regs were last updated. Bring it over here, subdivision regs, um, says amended in 2014. And I'm not sure what the amendment was. There were amendments in 2014, 2012, 2008. So those are the last three times that was amended, so it does, yeah. Why don't we add that as one of the next things to start looking at. Next meeting, I, we should have a application form for the excavation ready to look at. And maybe we'll see if we can finish the master plan recommendations, if we could get through that. Get that off of our. Yeah. It may take another couple of times. So I think.
I think we've made good progress.
Yeah. Okay, I have nothing else for tonight.
I'll make a motion too.
We are, we are adjourned.